Alrighty, good morning Commissioners, welcome to this Tuesday and over to Chair Harrington.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday, June 20th, 2023 Washington County Board of Commissioners Work Session. We have a big day today. This is Chair Catherine Harrington and I'm joined with Commissioners Roy Rogers, Pam Trees, and Jerry Willey. I guess Commissioner Phi is not coming today? Okay, we don't know. Alrighty, we have a very light work session agenda for today. We'll have an executive session later this afternoon. But we start at the top. Why don't we make sure first, go to formal agenda items? We have the Housing Authority Board of Directors meeting. We do not have any agenda changes to that meeting. We do have the Housing Authority of Washington County budget and that was emailed to us on June 5th. And for the Board of Commissioners meeting, big day, big day. So one of the consent agenda items, number four, was pulled. We do have an item under, excuse me, budget hearings that is not actually a public hearing, but rather it's the presentation of the Washington County budget. But we have an incredibly long agenda for public hearings for adoption because that's everything related to our budget adoption for today. So, big day. And then I had asked that we pull the item of Metzger Park off of the consent agenda to the action agenda so that we could get more information about the Metzger Park Local Improvement District.
Chair Harrington, staff are prepared for a staff presentation on that item.
Well, there. Good morning, Commissioner Phi.
I saw that Chair on the consent and was probably okay with it just because there was a letter from the Association supporting that. So I thought, well, okay, maybe we don't. But I'm perfectly fine with pulling it off and putting it on. I should have a staff report.
Well, we haven't gotten really information on the local improvement district area since our presentation in like 2019.
Okay, yeah, no, I'm fine with that. I just, that's what changed my mind from doing this. So, and then you're probably going to touch on this, but with Tom gone, are we going to have the executive session?
He's, he's planning on coming in for the executive session. Yeah.
He's going to share whatever he had.
I'm sure he'll wear a mask if, if, he says it's not a cold, it's, or it's not COVID. So, okay. Cool. So were there any questions on any of the items for any of those two meetings?
Yes. On the Metzger Park issue, there was two questions that I shared with the Chair that I'll share with you. So they were prepared. How many other properties in that LID are also in the city of Tigard or in the city of Beaverton because it weaves through there? So that's number one. And number two is, what, what is the title on that property? Who owns that property? So if, if, if all of a sudden it wasn't a well, I'd, who owns it? And I don't think I've ever known that.
Been in your district for how many years and you still haven't gotten that question answered?
Yeah, never worried about it.
Excuse me. I will try to not pop into the mic. Alrighty, so Board Communication, who would like to go first?
I'll go first. Nothing big last week other than we went to the Planback groundbreaking. I would say that Catherine did an excellent job with her comments, probably the best of anyone presenting. And Daniel, I think you probably had a bit of craftsmanship of that as well. So I always like to say staff, whoever involved, but Catherine was most expressive. But it was an interesting day, a big project and had a chance to say hello to Mrs. Planback, who I've known Doug since I was as mayor way back when. So he's now gone, passed away. But it was, it was a nice event. Everybody did a, everybody, good job. So that's the only thing I want to share.
This is the Planback Gardens Affordable Housing Project, 114 units with almost 20% of them being three bedroom and four bedroom, which is pretty extraordinary. Yes, yes. And it was the groundbreaking and it was really a great, well, it was a beautiful day, great turnout. Yep, LMC is the, the main contractor for that. They were there. Anyone else?
Yeah, I will. So we had after, remember a couple of weeks ago, we walked the three miles of the Council Creek. So we had a Council Creek elected steering committee meeting last week and recapped some of the things about the trail. Some of the decisions we've got to be making and then I had a public engagement update from Jake War of Espousal Strategies. So it's always good to hear what, I guess what people are expecting, but we're, we know it's, it's not unanimous about, they're all excited about having that trail. There's lots of concerns, but we'll get through those and we're going to move on ahead on that. Of course, we, we all went through the, four of us went through the cat building tour, which I thought was impressive. Not only was it, first time I'd been inside the whack-a-bill, the old whack-a-billing, but how large the building in on Elam Young is, it's a huge facility. Of course, all of the furniture that was left. So all of you can make your comments about that as well, but pretty interesting stuff. The, went to the, the COPA Northwest Act. We had an executive meeting because we are transitioning executive directors. I think we have 13 applications that the team will be going through over the next week or so and narrow those down to a couple of people that they'll bring forward for consideration. And then went to Comey's retirement party. It was an exciting thing. Of course, he heard, he heard lots of positive reviews from his staff and people that he's worked with for a long time. He's very deserving of all that. And it was, it was fun. He's, he's pretty excited about this retirement thing. So had his fishing, his fishing guide was at there. Of course, that's a staff person, I think, on, at the county. But yeah, he's ready to go. He's ready to move on.
Has he given you a lesson or two?
About retiring?
I don't take lessons very well for something. I don't know, but I think I've got one coming. Hold on, it weighs out.
Well, we have a new Clean Water Services potential Board of Directors assignment for you.
Is it retirement?
No, 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 no. With the Vientiane Laos delegation coming back, we're trying to make sure that we show them the best of our area. One of those, the director for VCOMs plays golf.
Oh, yeah. I don't have to tough that one out. Yeah. I might have to practice a couple of times to get ready. I don't want to embarrass the council. Gone all next week. Went to Cornelius, they've got a great groundbreaking, the Meadowlock Industrial Center that's there off of Fourth, I think it is. And so they, they were pretty excited about that. The contractor and the mayor and city manager and a few commissioners were all, or counselors were out there. So it's going to be a great facility and the contractor was very happy to be a part of the city. And then attended Friday night, the Fiesta of Hope with Adelante. And I'm pretty sure they met or exceeded their budget for the evening, but it was a fun event. Downtown Portland, kind of in northwest. And so, yeah, it was good. So it was good to be down there. Commissioner Phi was there as well and we saw lots of people that we knew, of course. So anyway, you can, you can give that. Did you stay for the after party? You don't have to admit this.
Hang on, question on Cornelius. Is Metro continuing to have plans for a transfer station out that way or?
Haven't heard anything about that. You know, that's a very good question because I don't know, it was a couple of years ago, we, we thought that was a go. So I haven't heard anything about that. I'll follow up.
Great, thank you.
Oh, yeah, I'm done. Go ahead, Pam.
And the Fiesta's gonna go. Yeah, since you mentioned my name, I'll go next after you. The Adelante de Mujeres, the Fiesta Hope was really fun. I, I do, I agree with you. I think they probably met their fundraising goals and it was really exciting to hear about their Espressa Esperanza program. And yeah, it was just really inspiring to just talk about a lot of issues around girls and women and children. So I, I, I look forward to it next year. I did not unfortunately stay for the after party. This is, not to say I'm not a fun person, but I just couldn't stay. But perhaps next year. The other thing I wanted to just quickly say, the cat building was also a really great tour. I'm really inspired and learned a lot, like the recovery community is in an area that I'm familiar with or have done a lot of work around, but it was really interesting and good to learn about the vision, the aspirations and the hope for that building and what we can do and the impact we can have for the community. So it was a really good learning and I appreciate the definitions staff that I asked for and staff gave. So look forward to that building. And then just one quick thing about JPAC. JPAC approved the release of the RTP to the public. So the next step is for Metro Council to approve to vote and then it'll be released. Last week I hosted the monthly town hall and we had about 40 minutes of questions from folks about pod villages. I know the team is working on updating our website every day and I continue to refer to folks to our Safe Rest Pod site for information. Just quickly, I've been noticing for a few things through the, my conversations. The language that we use to refer to the continuum of housing is not commonly understood. It would be really great to add this to our FAQ page so that the public can easily see how folks move, can move through the continuum and perhaps add some clarity around the differences between hotel vouchers, permanent housing and shelter, for example. The other thing I've been noticing through my conversations is that folks are interested in getting involved in the good neighbor agreement process. They're also interested in the contracting process. They're also interested in the site plan for the pods. Concerns around security and crime statistics keeps coming up. Interest in learning more about the two-year timeframe that was given for the temporary sites have been really something that's been coming up consistently. And, and I think that a clear expectation around where folks can go to find the answers to the questions they're asking will be great. And if that is the FAQ page, then let's make sure we continue to populate as new questions come in. I know this is probably true for the housing team as well, but Brenda and I have been getting many, many of the same questions for different people. So a central place will be really great. And then the other fun event.
Hang on one second. Before we transition to another event, I know that everything that I've heard you mention is part of the plan of record that the board has already provided direction to our staff on already. So I have no doubt that all of that information is being taken care of through our staff.
Yeah, no, the staff are, continues to work hard and things I'm noticing and will continue to work with the housing team. And then the other event I went to was Juneteenth, the Jerry Willy Plaza had a really great event coordinated by the Washington County Chambers of Commerce. And it was really, it was a lot more than last year, definitely. They had a lot more vendors participate and then a lot more community members. So I'm really excited to keep attending and look forward to how they grow. They might be running out of space though for next year probably because if they had twice as many vendors they did this year, next year they'll probably have more, but great event. Congratulations to the chambers for organizing and putting together a successful event another year. That concludes my report.
Thanks. Last week I attended the WA Transportation Committee meeting along with Commissioner Rogers. John Holworth at 3J Consulting is the chair and it was at his office right off of Nimbus. Aaron Wardell gave a really, really good overview of the, the transportation issues in the county and where funding comes from and the projects that are ongoing. Stephen Roberts was also on, online. So we had, we had very good support there. There were, there were a lot of questions and there was also a robust discussion that involving Commissioner Rogers around MSEP's history and the county's interest in looking at all sources in relationship to our budget in, in terms of where our four, seven, tens were and, and that type of thing. So, but that was, it was, it was a good discussion. The, I attended the cat building tours. I'd never seen so many cubicles in one space.
What did they say? Those three?
I don't know, thousands. Thousands, it's just like, some sort of Matrix movie or something. It was, it was something. But anyway, it was really exciting to see the, to see on the, on everybody's faces, the intention. And that's what was really cool. So it was, it was exciting and it was, it was very purposeful for, and really affirming for me to, to be on that. I attended the Impact Coordinating Committee meeting. We do that to make sure that we're, our agendas are in place for the upcoming impact meetings. The next one is in person. It's on the 28th. We are going to be looking at the consideration of MTAC nominees for Metro. It's kind of an ongoing thing that we do. Community placemaking grants discussion is going to be held by Metro. The Transit Oriented Development Program Strategic and Work Plan Update from Metro is on the list and the Urban Growth Management Discussion, Middle Housing Potential from Metro and Echo Northwest staff. The, the other thing I just want to remind you is that we hold this meeting and then I worked with Jessica Pelz before the impact meeting. And then we also, I also hold a, it's usually pretty short, but a, a meeting with all the people from the West Side that are participating in impact, just to talk about issues and if they want to see anything appear on the agenda and that type of, that type of issue. I attended the PBA Annual Meeting and that included a VIP reception for mostly for electeds and the leadership of PBA, the board and that type of thing at the Sentinel. It was really a meeting about highlighting what Portland is doing in relationship to the, the issues that they face. Mayor Wheeler spoke, JB P, or, excuse me, Chair, Chair Jessica Vega Peterson also spoke and it was, it was really good. They were, it was all about building bridges to a new and better Portland. They also announced that they've had a big name change. They are now, they reclaimed the name Portland Metro Chamber and they feel it's a true reflection of what they do. So. Then on Friday, I attended the RDPO meeting and it's so nice to have John Williams on those calls. He's so knowledgeable and he just, when he does his report, it's kind of get a little puffed up like, yep, that's Washington County.
John Williams or John Wheeler?
I'm sorry. I apologize.
Is an old Metro guy, isn't he?
Yeah, I got my, I got my names mixed up there.
We have a John Williams too.
Oh, that's true.
Yes.
Well, my apologies.
I had just promoted him.
My apologies to John Wheeler, but I, the, the sentiment is still the same. He does a great job. It was, the discussion was a lot around the legislative action that's going on in Salem. There's an OEM budget bill that's awaiting Senate action and there's also a disaster response matching funds. And that establishes the Oregon Disaster Response Assistant Matching Fund to provide local governments grants to match contributions to access federal, federal funding. So there was a lot of that. But there was also a fascinating video from the Scapoose, I think it was the Scapoose Fire Department about how fighting fires and how they had pinpointed when, when a building is on fire, especially the one down in Portland, where the source of the fire is and how they can project where the water goes and not just flooding the whole building, but right to the source of the fire within the building. It was really, it's, the meetings are pretty cool, actually. It's really interesting. So this week I have a planning session for District Eight AOC meeting that's going to be in September. And I, the Community Action Board of Directors meeting is in person and we have the Acre Retreat on Friday.
I'll finish up. Thanks, everyone, for mentioning the various events that occurred last week. I will only add, in addition to attending those with you, had the monthly Chair Mayor's meeting where we focused on syncing up on camping, time, place and manner ordinance. And they appreciated how our ordinance is a reflection of the edges between unincorporated Washington County and various cities. Got quite an earful from Mayor Delane on the Cornelius Safe Rest Pod proposal that we're working through. He wishes for their city to essentially have decision-making authority over what the property owner does with that property as well as all aspects of it. The Public Safety Coordinating Council had a tour of the Kears Northwest facility on Cornell Road as well as the existing Family Justice Center. FJC is moving forward with purchasing a new building and hopefully that is rounding a final milestone. Which got me thinking about all that surplus furniture from the Elam Young Building and hoping that the process allows for helping nonprofits that, especially those that work with us under contract. Then lastly, I have no expectation of our hearing from our government relations team for the next week as they are heads down trying to make sure that there are positive outcomes, as many positive outcomes and as few as negative outcomes for the county as possible. It's not looking great. I'll just leave it at that. So the, the team there deserves a break from this and I hope that we will have a full complement for our government relations team in the interim. If not full FTE, that contract resources are finally secured because they stretched themselves too thin. So, yeah, that's, that's it for me. Leadership communication.
Thank you, Commissioner Trees, for mentioning John Wheeler. He is very talented. And that brings me to my first.
First John Williams, by the way.
Very true. So on June 13th and 14th, our emergency management staff, along with staff from several other departments participated in the Shake Off 2023 Earthquake Exercise. Across the county, 15 organizations participated, including cities, special districts, hospitals and community-based organizations. On June 13th, the County Emergency Operations Center was partially activated. The participants in this exercise worked through situation assessment, resource ordering and other EOC functions. The county and our partners conducted a communications drill where part, where players tested their ability to use backup communication methods such as radios and satellite phones. This was followed by a communications drill involving organizations across the Portland Metro region. I do think this demonstrates this, how staff are working across agencies on our emergency preparedness. While this was focused on earthquake preparedness, this can transcend other types of disasters from a coordinated approach.
With, I believe it's September is, if nothing else, I may not get the name right, Earthquake Preparedness Month. Given that we've shifted a lot of our focus away from pandemic focus, I'm hoping that we might have some communications for all employees that really gets, get us to test ourselves as employees. You know, are you ready? Should it happen during the course of a workday? And are you ready if it happens outside of normal business hours, office work time? Just to test ourselves and, and see how prepared we are. And help each, each one of us get, get ready. So we'll see.
Yeah, I know staff are planning. I don't know the exact timing and I don't know the extent, but I know something's in the works.
There, right? It's months and months away.
It doesn't always feel months and months away.
Yes, but especially for those of you who are parents whose kids have just transitioned out of the academic year in the summer.
My kids may be thinking that, but I like when they're in school because that's when I know where they are at all times. So I'd like to ask Michael to come up, please. This is the introduction from last week that we delayed. This is Michael Bonacor. He is our interim housing director. Michael has over 30 years of experience in public and nonprofit sectors, including 20 years at Home Forward, the Housing Authority of Multnomah County. There he held a variety of positions, including policy director for the Moving to Work Program, deputy executive director and seven years as executive director. Michael is passionate about building authentic relationships, advancing racial equity and fostering strong teamwork and collaboration. He's excited to support the team as we continue to search for the next director. As a reminder, the housing director's search is currently open. I am told that we do have a strong pool of applicants. Part of this pool is a testament to the county being a moving to work agency. That is an attractive aspect as well as the work we are doing within supportive housing services. So with that, Michael, do you want to share a few words?
Sure, thank you. Chair Harrington, Commissioners, it's a pleasure to be here this morning. Thank you for welcoming me into this role. It's work that I love. I've had some time over the past couple of weeks to start to orient to the big agenda of work ahead of all of us. And spend some time with Comey before he departed. So it's been really exciting to see just sort of the breadth and scope of what's, what's in store for our summer together and really impressed with the team. I was able to attend last week's board meeting and just really appreciate that, you know, you all are grappling with some very deeply felt and important issues in this community and your commitment to sort of, you know, guiding the ship through difficult discussions and decisions is really admirable and I'm happy to support that however I can in my time here. Really thrilled to know that the applicant pool is looking good for a permanent director. They'll have big shoes to fill in replacing Comey. But as I said, it's a, you know, it, it's an But as I said, it's a, you know, it, it's an honor for me to be here in this interim role and I know that you will find someone really fantastic who will continue the good work you're doing. So thank you.
Well, thank you for joining, joining the organization and helping ensure that the vast array of work that is going on in the Housing Department, uh, continues. Best practices, innovative program, meeting the needs of our community and that our implementation continues to get better and better every single week and month. So thank you for joining us.
One question, is his position, a permanent position then?
No, it's just interim. So, um, as was mentioned earlier, Comey is smiling from ear to ear, ready to retire.
Right.
Yep. And so, uh, Michael is stepping in, uh, with his vast experience in housing to just be that interim director to help support the department prior to, um, the permanent director being hired.
Once that's filled.
Correct.
Michael will be departing us.
Yep, correct, correct.
Hello and goodbye. I don't know how long that's going to take.
I think I'll be with you through the summer at least.
Okay.
I, I heard you at the Comey's, um, retirement party and, um, uh, you have an impressive background and I, I have to say, I was wondering if I missed the announcement. So I went through Horizon right there when you were speaking and learned more about your background then. Um, very impressive and, uh, I'm very glad you're stepping in to help Washington County in the meantime and just, uh, very excited with your background. I was, um, happy to hear your extensive collaboration that you've done with Comey even outside Washington.
Thank you.
Welcome.
And that concludes my update.
Thank you. Good morning, Brad.
Good morning. So, um, as you heard, Tom's a little under the weather right now, so I'm just mentioning here today. Uh, he may be in this afternoon for the exec session. Two quick updates, you should have a copy of the EMS franchise agreement for your review. Um, if you have any questions, comments, just let me know. Second, as we know, we live in a world that is full of scammers and they're getting more sophisticated all the time. We would recommend that everybody, you know, because of the DMV breach, that they should probably check their credit report and maybe put a hold. Just, just, yeah, and you can find that information on almost, uh, any website, I think right now because it's such a huge issue. And actually, our, so this, go ahead.
Here's a trick and maybe you can help me with this. If you Google free credit report, do not go with the first link. There is a special, somebody's been running ads. So you want to go to one that has a dot gov. And I'm sorry, I can't remember the full tip. If anybody from leadership does remember, maybe we could put something on Horizons.
Catherine, it, it is, I just looked, it is on Horizon about the, oh, dot DMV database.
Okay.
Yeah. And I think on that they have the links included in there.
Excellent.
Oregonian did an article.
Yes. Yeah, the Oregonian has the correct links as well. Unfortunately, you know, these things happen and, uh, you know, you've probably heard of the family member scam as well, where they're faking to be a family member.
By voice?
Yes, by voice. So that's yet another one. We've had the jury duty scam as well. That they say they're from the sheriff's office and you need to, you didn't show up to jury duty, blah, blah, blah. We just had yet another one here in Washington County that I wondered about this morning, uh, regarding lost animals. And there are some, um, fraudsters out there right now claiming that they're calling from Bonnie Hayes Animal Shelter about their animal. And that they need, um, you need to send them a, you know, a card to get your, your animal back. Not a credit card necessarily, but you know, gift card, et cetera. So our communications team is working on a strategy to let people know that, in fact, that is not coming from Bonnie Hayes Animal Shelter.
Wow. Bad people have incredible imagination.
Good people do too, but it's.
In regard to this whole plethora of, of, of issues and IT events happening everywhere. Is there anything else that the county should be alerting us to coming through our private information as well? Now we, most people have accounts here.
So, good question. Um, as you may have read in the news about the DMV, uh,
Yeah, that's, that's.
Well, well, so I'm getting to that, that it was based upon third-party software that the DMV was using. And, um, and that's how they infiltrated and we're checking right now to see if we were using that system at all. All indications are we are not right now. But yes, we're constantly checking up all these latest infiltrations and scams.
Presently no, known way for the county to alert us that there's nothing that we ought to be doing to refresh. Password changes, I mean, everybody does that. Anything else?
We are alerting you of anything that you should be doing if there's any. I will, um, share this with Sam Kim, our, uh, interim IT director, um, to just, um, indicate the board has interest. If there's anything that the board needs to be doing to alert the board as soon as possible, because this does change.
Again, I don't want to sound like a broker, but my great fear is that I can take Jerry Willie's voice, I've heard it enough. I'll pick on him now and say somebody else and I can do all kinds of scams with AI. I mean, I can tell anybody here and say, I need this information, I want that. I need money. I did, you know, there's some problem. It's a problem.
It is, and we do have a security team and IT that's always on the alert for what's the latest issue out there.
You know, when you first brought that up, I didn't know what you were talking about, like, but then I seen it on social media.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's like, it's so scary. I, I, when I saw it, I was like, oh my goodness, this is exactly what.
You'll be fine. Don't answer any emails. My, my, my concern, well, I don't get more belated, but my concern is because we're such public entities.
Right.
We have tapes of all of our meetings.
Right.
They can get enough of our voice. That's the problem. Shouldn't there be some kind of encrypted?
Or make you say stuff that.
Oh, we could say anything.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've seen, I've seen like artificial, what is it called? AI?
Got your face, got your voice, got everything. Oh, boy.
Yeah, thank you for the Bonnie, like I'll look out.
Yeah.
Like if this is really good information, scammers are out.
That's what I would say.
I think, uh, the chair stepped out, so you're facilitated.
Dan, are you done?
I'm done. Yes.
Dan, what did you like to share with us? The, the chair, the chair has left and we're doing updates.
Thank you, um, Director Rogers and good morning, uh, Board of Clean Water Services. So our cybersecurity is also on high alert. Um, there's lots of folks that are in particular spoofing me and phishing me with our teams. So sending fake tests, texts and emails, asking for, um, things to be paid or procured. So, but our team is very alert. They're really good at, um, letting our, um, digital solutions people know. In fact, there's someone from Uzbekistan. So they're actually able to track where some of these are coming from. It's a very strange world we live in with cybersecurity, but there's certain hotspots that they're actually tracking that's a source of all of this. So yeah, it's the new world that we live in, but this DMV overlay creates a whole, just a, you had a whole other thing. We have had, um, fake IRS tax filings with our staff. So there's just a lot going on out there.
That's why you don't file a tax return.
They file tax returns before the employee can.
Oh, that's going on nationally.
Yeah, yeah. It's just, it's the world we live in, unfortunately.
File and they already been filed on.
We have, um, three events that Mark wanted me to share with you. So on June twenty-second, um, we're hosting the Pacific Northwest Water Reuse Summit at Durham. Um, and the chair will be welcoming, uh, the participants and Representative Ken Helm has been invited. The Water Reuse Association Executive Director, Pan Stanicropi is flying in. Oregon DEQ has been, uh, invited. I'm giving a short keynote, um, at that event. And there's going to be field trips and a evening reception. So people are really looking at, I'm gathering, uh, together here between Oregon, Washington and Idaho to talk about water reuse. Yeah, June twenty-sixth, um, Clean Water Services will be hosting Representative Bonamici and staff, at the Forest Grove Water, uh, Resources, uh, Recovery Facility, um, to provide a briefing on CWS's Western Washington Sewer, um, Infiltration and Flow Rehab Project. So, um, the congressman selected in advance the federal funding request for this project that would benefit the communities of Forest Grove, Cornelius and Gaston, uh, where we, uh, tree wastewater at the Forest Grove Facility. Um, so we'll be hosting, uh, the Congresswoman, um, with the City of Forest Grove. Mayor's Wenzel and Delane have been invited, um, the city managers, Peter Brandon from Cornelius and Jesse Vanderzum, and from Forest Grove have confirmed that they'll be there.
Has, uh, Representative Salinas had the opportunity of the impressive CWS tours yet?
We are scheduling something in the fall.
Wonderful. Good.
What we did with the board last April. So Blueberry Farm out there, kind of, so that interplay between Farmville.
Oh, excellent. Good. Thanks.
So Diane, what time, on the twenty-sixth, um, what time are you expecting, um, Representative Bonamici?
Somewhere.
So, uh, we're meeting with her from eleven thirty to twelve thirty.
Okay.
So it'll be eleven thirty in the facility at, at Forest Grove and that will be on the field probably from twelve to twelve thirty.
Okay, yeah. The reason I ask is, uh, she and I are walking along the Salmonberry Trail at ten o'clock. So what, how much space we have from getting her from there to Forest Grove? So it looks like we're okay because that's supposed to be for an hour and she can easily get to your place at eleven thirty and then, yeah, I wanted to join that, but I have the Forest Grove Chamber presentation to do in noon, so I can't do that.
Thank you. Then on, Mark, I might as well stand because there's more questions. So on July seventh, uh, Clean Water Services and the Baum Grove Project Team is hosting a community open house and tour at the location of the former dam. And on, uh, Thursday, it's on Thursday from four to seven PM. Yeah, there'll be food and activities for children and adults. Joe Galls Connect, Community Connection Newsletter is going to be sent out this next week with a lot more details. And then we're working with the partners to actually plan a formal, uh, ribbon cutting event with the board and, um, other partners in the fall. I think there'll be, it's a significant project and it really opens up, um, that area for the salmon. So.
I'm sorry I'll miss that.
Oh.
When's your building?
Oh, yes. Yeah.
Commissioner Rogers, um, sorry if I'm springing this on anyone. I have to go back to New Hampshire, so I'll be going on Friday, June thirtieth and coming back on July seventh. Will you be around that week as Vice Chair? Okay, so I will be totally reachable. But, uh, when I'm out of state, I try to touch bases with the Vice Chair to make sure that you know and otherwise we make sure we've got other coverage. So, yeah.
And I'll be out on vacation June thirtieth through July fourth, helping my youngest son move into a new apartment. I'm down in Santa Monica.
Hopefully he's got you a nice armchair and you just say, take that and over there and, uh, there's no heavy lifting here on this.
He's got movers, but this is the first time, um, he actually wanted mom to come help nest for him. So he wanted me to decorate.
Oh, good.
So that's a great thing.
So, um, Diane, today we've got the, uh, I think it's Nefisa and I have the tour, the building tour.
Yes.
And it's scheduled to start at, uh, three o'clock. Is, is our work, is our executive session going to last very long at one thirty?
I don't think so.
Because see, that's, so at one thirty, we have maybe a thirty-minute exec station. So we got from two to three. Is there flex in there? Could we start a little bit earlier if we, if we had that time?
Yeah, so we can help at the range. And, and what this is about is just sort of contemplating Clean Water Services future. There's just a lot of property that's become available out on the market. So we're still, um, assessing, stay where we are, fix what we have, or then to look if there's other properties that, um, might provide, um, better access to employees to mass transit and, and also more security for the.
I would recommend that you don't build an office building on a swamp.
Yeah, the bugs, the bee. We have interesting issues.
I know.
The bats and the mice and the snakes and the snakes and the bugs.
Oh, my goodness.
It's not really something that lots of employees.
I mean, with nature.
Yeah.
Other duties as.
Kathy and Mark and Jerry, you know, we've put up a lot over the years, but, um, but I am looking at security because both those bridges will collapse in events and we just need to be more secure for our headquarters. But we're just looking, kicking some tires, but it's interesting what's out there.
What, what time are we predicting that our meeting will be for today? Thank you.
I have no idea.
Wild guess.
Quick muss. What do we have for signups? Do you know? Commissioner Rogers was asking if we had any estimates on how long our meetings would.
So we did have a sign up this morning for the Housing Authority for two minutes at the beginning, but, uh, we have not received anything from the board meeting as of this moment.
The reason, the reason I asked, I don't know if it helped Jerry, but it seemed like, why, why get over close to noon, break for an hour and then come back to have fifteen, twenty minute and then, then you're, you're trying to juggle. Why not just go right into the exec session? That would release you.
Depends on how Tom feels.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's about, right.
You don't, you can't handle that exec session.
I, I'm not really hundred percent familiar with what he's planning on talking about today.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I thought it was.
Okay. Great. It sounds like the plan for your tour will work just fine. So, great. Any last items? Okay, well, we'll see you at about ten o'clock then. Thank you.